The Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Conway. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed.
Here.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Conway. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Rhodey. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Cohn. Alderwoman Navarro. Seventeen present.
Quorum being present, we are blessed today to have with us to lead us in prayer Pastor Moore. And if that last name sounds familiar, it should because it is the younger brother of our very own Alderman Sam Moore. So let's give a welcome to Pastor Moore as he comes to lead us in prayer this morning.
Thank you, President Reed. If you may, please bow your heads. Dear God, we thank you again for another opportunity to come together to offer prayer for these that are concerned about the city and the well-being of man. Lord, we trust and pray that you will continue to show favor. Although there may be differences, Lord, let our differences be mended to whereas we can do the things that are better concern for our city. God, we thank you again for the tragedies that we may be able to see those things curtailed and even eliminated. We thank you for your covering over this city, and we look forward to seeing more blessings from you. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Thank God. Amen. Thank you, sir.
Now, some of you have probably heard Alderman Sam Moore sing. And he has a gift that's been given to him, and he can really sing, just like his mother. This Pastor Moore can play whether it be trombone, the saxophone, like nobody's business. He is just amazing. So if you ever get a chance to listen to him, you will be definitely amazed and thankful that you had that opportunity. We will suspend with our regularity business, take up our courtesy resolution count, I move for adoption our courtesy resolution count, I obtain a second on that motion. Second about Alderman from the thirteenth. Alderman from the eighth, like to approach the dais. You got a hat? Alderman from the eighteenth.
Madam Clerk, could you read the resolution, would you please? You need a copy?
Whereas, excuse me. Whereas after sixteen years of dedicated service to the City of St. Louis, Mr. Freddie L. Dunlap will retire on December the first, two thousand and seventeen. And whereas Mr. Dunlap began his career with the City of St. Louis on April the seventeenth, two thousand and one, when he was appointed as the Supply Commissioner for the city. Mr. Dunlap was then appointed as the City Assessor on October the first, two thousand and thirteen. Whereas Mr. Dunlap's integrity, commitment to professionalism, and dedication to the city earned him the respect and admiration of his coworkers and the community. And whereas Mr. Dunlap was appointed to the Board of Trustees of the Employees Retirement System in July, two thousand and nine. Whereas Mr. Dunlap is a patriot who served in the United States Air Force from nineteen fifty-nine to nineteen seventy-nine, who completed four years of duty, tours of duty in Southeast Asia during the Vietnam War, who often represents the city at veterans' events, and who has served as a Soldiers Memorial Commissioner since two thousand and ten. And whereas Freddie has been married to Frances Moore for forty-four years, has two children, Caprene Hardy and Monte Dunlap, four siblings, Lee Arthur Dunlap, Dr. Queen D. Fowler, Carlos Dunlap, and Laurie Dunlap, six grandchildren, Tito John and Sam Hardy, and Kylan Roman and Darian Dunlap, and two very special relations, nephew Cameron Gilmore and cousin Brandon McKissick. And whereas we are pleased to extend a sincere thank you to Mr. Dunlap for his long and productive service, and wish him good health and much happiness in his retirement. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberations to express our sincere appreciation to Freddie L. Dunlap for his many contributions to the City of St. Louis. And we further wish Mr. Dunlap the best in his retirement. We direct the clerk of this board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and to prepare a commemorative copy to the end that it may be presented to our honoree at a time and place distinguished, introduced on the seventeenth day of November two thousand and seventeen by Honorable Stephen Conway, Alderman of the Eighth Ward, and Honorable Louis E. Reed, President of the Board of Aldermen.
Can we have our collective revenue Greg Daly, please join us here at the dais also? Join us up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I am not the Alderman of the Eighth. But some say we look so much alike. It is my honor to stand here, though, as the floor majority leader and present this resolution to Mr. Dunlap. I have watched him through the years, and though I am not his Alderman, I've watched his professionalism, his concern for this city, and his ability to make things happen when there sometimes seems to be no way to get it done. He has always done it with both a level of cheer and enthusiasm, as well as a deep sensitivity to the needs of the citizens of this city and to an understanding of how city government works. Now that's a tall order to be able to do all of that here in this city as serving individuals because sometimes in public work, it is not always easy to do this, listening to the complaints, listening to the concerns, but more so being able to make things happen and solve the problems as they come to him. That is both an honorable and a very highly developed skill that he has brought to the City of St. Louis. Retirement, we'll see. We certainly know that his type of person with the type of energy that he brings to the table always will have something productive to do on behalf of other people. And so we look forward to seeing his future endeavors past the City of St. Louis. I believe, Mr. President, that there are others who have words to say.
Alderman from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I've known Freddie Dunlap for a few years now, and I've always enjoyed working with him, always looked forward when he took the time out to say hello at the municipal garage. Freddie has always been very professional, there's no doubt, and a very lucky man to be able to retire and enjoy things in life, especially with the grandkids and family. So Freddie, I wish you well in your future endeavors and say it's been a pleasure working And, Mr. President, if I'm not out of line, if it's okay that I would make a motion that the resolution be in bank if there's no objection?
It's been moved by Alderman from the twelfth, second about Alderman from the nineteenth, that we make this resolution in bank. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries. Alderman from the twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Lisa. Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. Mr. Dunlap, I know when my constituents and some of the people that I know had any questions, especially dealing with real estate, you know, you were always there for us, and you helped us out quite a bit, answering the tough questions and solving a lot of problems. So we really appreciate that. And also, I want to thank you for your years of service that you served in the military, and enjoy your retirement. Thank you.
Alderman from the twenty-second.
Good morning, Mr. President and members of the board. Thank you. Congratulations, Freddie Dunlap. I've had a pleasure of working with Freddie in his capacity as Supply Commissioner. We worked on some legislation, he helped me get passed through as it related to supply and purchase of goods, the City of St. Louis. I've worked with him in his capacity as Assessor, always detailed-oriented. What I love about working with Freddie is he's a true public servant. When you call him, he gets right back with you. You don't have to worry about two days, three days, he gets right back with you, and he solves his problems. He's a military guy, he was Air Force. I'm Army. I only wish I could have the demeanor that he has. He is so cool and calm. He don't seem to get real stressed out about stuff like this Army guy right here. And I just wish I had some of that. So congratulations, I appreciate all your years of service to our country and to our city. Congratulations.
Alderman from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. So, Mr. Dunlap, long before I became an alderperson, I had many experiences working with you with various endeavors. But what I do know is that if we could bottle your personality and your demeanor and your dedicated purpose to what you are responsible for, would this country would become so well-balanced in its budget that we wouldn't know what to do with all the money. I really, really respect you in many, many ways because you step quietly, but you handle your business. And I have much for you to do at the Tiffany Neighborhood Association meetings, so come on board now that you retired, okay? Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the fourteenth.
Yes, I would like my name added to this.
All right.
Oh, they did embank, I'm sorry. Pay attention. Sorry. But anyway, I wish you the best in your retirement and your, you know, your long service and history with the city is remarkable. So best wishes to you, enjoy, and don't let any grass grow under your feet.
Any further discussions? Any further discussions? Any further discussion? We're gonna, I'm gonna say a couple of words, then turn it back over to the Alderman from the eighth to wrap us up. Freddie, you know, I am so honored to have made your acquaintance and be able to call you a friend. But I believe nearly everyone you meet, they call you a friend. You're probably one of these people that have never met a stranger. It's because your demeanor and your personality. And one thing that I so appreciate, I appreciate the fact that when we give you something, we ask for something, you can walk away understanding that it's gonna be done, and it's gonna be done, and it's gonna be done correctly. You have done just an incredible job for the City of St. Louis, and I am indeed thankful and grateful for all the work that you've done. This resolution is but a piece of paper, but it's the highest honor the board has to give any organization or individual. And what it does is mincemeans some of your many contributions up until this point. So that one hundred, two hundred years from now, when you research the records of the City of St. Louis, and you read about the rebirth of our city, you read amongst those records the name Freddie L. Dunlap, and know that you passed his way, and you've made a significant contribution, so much so that we pause today on our deliberations to recognize it. So again, I thank you for a job well done, and continue to do good work for our city and our nation. I did say Alderman Conway would speak next, but I forgot we had Greg Daly with us, so I'm gonna ask Greg Daly to come up and say a couple of words first.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board of Aldermen, Mr. and Mrs. Fred Dunlap. You know, I have had the pleasure of working with Freddie. We have this annual ritual that we send out these bills, you know, these personal property and real estate bills. And I can't ask, I couldn't have asked for a better guy to share that responsibility with. It's something that when it does go out, we get tons of phone calls. And Fred has always been the most cooperative guy over there, along with his staff. He's done a wonderful job in the Assessor's Office. And a little sideline is that every soldier, every memory, or every Veterans Day, I participate in the veteran ceremony down at, down around Soldiers Memorial. Freddie Dunlap is front and center. He's done a wonderful job both here at City Hall, but he's done a great job in the community, been a voice of the veterans, and we're just, we're just happy to, I'm very happy to have known him, and God, I certainly hope to see him in the future here. Thank you very much.
Alderman from the eighth.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. I can't remember what year I met Fred, but it was after one of the re-districtings, and the Tiffany Neighborhood came into the Eighth Ward. And their neighborhood associations at that time would have eight, nine, ten people. But Fred was definitely the most concerned and hard-working member of the association. He kept things intact. You would know about the hall and the park, and making sure that all the improvements in the park was perfect. But I met Fred because of his dedication in the neighborhood. And then at one time, Mayor Slay asked me, he said, Steve, I need a Supply Commissioner. I said, Do you know anyone? I said, You know what? I got this guy that just retired after many, many years at Southwestern Bell in the Eighth Ward. And so I was very happy because I knew Fred personally. I only recommend people that I have the utmost confidence in for a position. And the Supply Office, which the Supply Commissioner's Office, historically, there were always problems there, people problems and, you know, accusations. He ran that office, and we heard nothing wrong about that office. He ran it absolutely perfectly. And then the mayor was taken by his skills, tact, personality, and ability to manage that office and made him the Assessor. And we had the same type of results from Fred in that office, without a question, always run, in an incredibly great fashion. Fred has been a great neighbor and a valued employee here to the City of St. Louis. So I'd like to congratulate Fred and his wife on a job well done. And Fred, would you like to come up and say a couple of words?
Mr. President, members of the board, guests, coworkers from our office, this has been an incredible journey for me. It all started in nineteen fifty-nine, and here we are in two thousand and seventeen, and it's not over. Yes, I am leaving city service as a full-time employee. I must say that I have enjoyed city service tremendously. This is my city. This is my city. There is nothing that I can do for the city that I'm not willing to do. Whatever it takes, that's what the city will get from Fred Dunlap. You know, that's, I've always been that way, and I will continue to be that way. I will support the city one hundred percent. I will support all of you as alderpeople, all of you. I will give you my support. Whatever I can do, even though I'm gone, call me, and I'm willing to get out there and do it. This has been tremendous for me and my wife. My wife Frances, forty-four years, and she is a moor. Don't know if you're related or not, but she's a moor. Forty-four years, she has been my backbone. I appreciate that. There are days when I didn't think I was going to go further to take the next step. The encouragement was there, and the next step was taken. I've got a lot of more steps to go. I just had my seventy-sixth birthday last Friday, and I'm not ready to stop. I am not ready to stop. I will keep going as long as you need me.
Anyone that would like to be in the photo with Fred, could you please make your way to the dais as soon as possible, quickly? It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our courtesy resolution count, all in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please prepare another copy of that resolution in bank.
So noted.
We will now return to our regular order of business. Introduction of honored guests. Any introduction of honored guests? Alderwoman from the thirteenth.
President, members of the board, I'd like to have as my honored guest members from the YMCA, especially Don Evernheim, he's the Executive Director of the Cronolife Branch, I always say it wrong, I'm sorry, and Dan Schultz, he is the District Vice President of the Gateway Region YMCA, and various and as sundry other members whose names I don't all remember. They had a nice reception over in two oh eight, and all the Aldermen are gonna get a short email of the presentation that they had, it's a little video. And the refreshments are back in the kitchen if you missed them this morning. I don't know if they're gonna be around a little longer in the back if somebody wants to say anything. Yes, and then I would like them all to stand because I don't remember all their names. Okay. Thank you so much.
Alderman from the seventh.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my honored guest today Anthony Lancia from the Association of General Contractors. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the twenty-seventh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to recognize my special guests, Fred Cersey, Director of Minority Recruitment, and Samuel Adams, Keith Taylor, and Jeff Hantaz, with St. Louis Kansas City Carpenter Regional Council.
Alderman from the twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Thank you, Lisa. My special guest today would be Mrs. Stephanie Robertson of Ameren Uwe, and also the Sheriff for the City of St. Louis, Varnie Bass.
Alderman from the twenty-second.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have several honored guests this morning. First honored guest, well-renowned Tony Fisher, Business Representative with Local One Forty-eight Operating Engineers, Chris Pickle, AT&amp;T, Anthony Lancia, Associate General Contractors.
Alderman from the eleven.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to introduce my special guests as Lou Hamilton and Jeff Abusi. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the fourteenth.
I would like to have as my honored guest Senator Harry Kennedy from the Recorder of Deeds Office and the Committee Woman from the Fourteenth Ward, also Gary Otten from Painters District Council Fifty-eight, and last but not least Nathan Lett, who represents the EMS portion of the Fire Department. But I'd also like to recognize the firefighters that so heroically saved our city this week with this terrible fire we had. They did a wonderful job, and luckily, no life was lost in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman from the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I don't have a special guest, everyone in here is my special guest today. And my very special guest is Shane Cohn.
You remember, say, your brother, Donny? Alderman Moore, you better, Donny?
Yeah, the preacher.
We also have, we're so honored to have with us today also Gretchen and Michael from Sierra Club. Thank you for being here, and thank you for all your works in helping the City of St. Louis be more renewable. Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from the tenth, like to wrap us up?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We're gathered here on November seventeenth, and on this day in nineteen thirteen, the Panama Canal opened. On this day in nineteen fifty-three, the St. Louis Browns became the Baltimore Orioles. In nineteen seventy-three, we all got to sit at home and watch our president proclaim that he was not a crook. Don't we miss the good old days? Thank you.
All right, Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on approval at the minutes.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the minutes of the October twenty-seventh and November third meetings be approved.
Moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, second about Alderman from the twenty-fifteen. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries. Reporter city officials.
Reporter city officials can be found in Sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all Aldermen's mailboxes.
Will dispense with line items seven and eight. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Will dispense with line items nine and ten. First read of board bills.
Board Bill one eighty-eight, sponsored by Alderman Kotar, in honors to terminate and dissolve the Orphan Theater Community Improvement pursuant to the Community Improvement District Act of the Revised Statutes of Missouri. of the Revised Statutes of Missouri. Board Bill 189, sponsored by Alderman Moore, in ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on November the 8th, 2017, to change the zoning of property as indicated on the district map from C Multiple Family Dwelling District and F Neighborhood Commercial District to the F Neighborhood Commercial District only for property at 2505 North Sarah Street, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 190, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, in ordinance pertaining to the Administration and Use of Parking Meter Fund, and repealing subsection B 2 of Section 2 of Ordinance 70611. Board Bill 191, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, in ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to provide for the establishment of a Forest Park Southeast Farm-Based District, and containing a severability clause and an effective date clause. Board Bill 192, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, in ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to repeal the Grove Commercial Area Special Use District, Ordinance 67924, and setting an effective date. Board Bill 193, sponsored by President Reed, in ordinance amending ordinance 69429 pertaining to the unlawful possession of marijuana by repealing Sections 2 and 3 of said ordinance, and enacting new Sections 2 and 3 pertaining to the same subject matter, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 194, sponsored by Alderman Howard, in ordinance submitting to the qualified voters of the city a proposal to repeal Section 2 of Article 8 of the City Charter, requiring city officers and employees to reside within the boundaries of the city, and thus allow said officers and employees to reside outside of the boundaries of the city, and providing for an election to be held for voting on the proposed revision, and the manner of voting thereat, and for the publication, certification, deposit, and recording of this ordinance, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 195, sponsored by Alderman Kotar, in ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 2001 and 2003, and. Board Bill 196, sponsored by Alderman Conway and Alderman Kotar, in ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 4121 Russell. Board Bill 197, sponsored by Alderman Martin, in ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 7500 through 7518 South Broadway. Board Bill 198, sponsored by Alderman Volmer, in ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 5231 through 5233 and 5239 through 41 Shaw. Board Bill 199, sponsored by Alderman Gunther, in ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 4601 South Broadway. Board Bill 200, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, in ordinance dissolving Special Allocation Fund for the Edison Brothers Warehouse and Center for Emerging Technologies Redevelopment Project, terminating the designation of those portions of the city of St. Louis, Missouri, as redevelopment areas, and authorizing certain actions relating thereto. That's the extent of our first readings.
Alderman from the 17th.
Yes, Mr. President, I rise for the purpose of requesting a suspension of the rules for the purpose of introducing a board bill number 201.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 17th, to suspend our rules for the purposes of introducing Board Bill 201, and seconded by Alderman from the 10th. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Conway. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alderman Martin. Alderman Honowitz. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navarro. President Reed. Alderman Ingracia. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Cone. Alderman Navarro. Twenty-five, aye votes.
By your vote, staying the motion, Alderman from the 17th, and introduce Board Bill number 201. Madam Clerk, please read the forward for Board Bill 201.
Board Bill 201, introduced by Alderman Rhodey, in ordinance determining that the tax increment financing plans listed in Exhibit A are making satisfactory progress under the proposed time schedule for a completement of projects therein.
Alderman from the 3rd, you recognize.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, good morning. I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules to introduce Board Bill 202.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 3rd, seconded by Alderman from the 1st, that we suspend the rules for the purposes in introducing Board Bill 202. It's been a request for previous roll, and no objection, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please read the forward for Board Bill 202.
Board Bill 202, sponsored by Alderman, Brandon Bosley, in ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Streets to permanently close barricade or otherwise impede the flow of traffic on Sullivan Avenue by blocking said traffic flow from Grand Avenue, and containing an emergency clause.
Madam Clerk, please assign Board Bill 201 to HUDs and 202 to streets. Could the clerk please work with Alderman from the 14th, from the 4th? He has a question on the block within the bill. So, please assign Board Bill 201 to HUDs and 202 to streets.
So noted. That's the extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to committee.
To the Legislation Committee, Board Bill 193 and 194. To the Streets Committee, Board Bill 190 and 202. To the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill 188. To the Housing Committee, Board Bills 189, 191, 192, 200, and 201. And to the Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bill 195, 196, 197, 198, and 199. That's the extent of reference to committees.
Second reading.
The following board bill was reported out of the Legislation Committee, Board Bill 99, as amended, sponsored by President Reed, Alderman, and Alderwomen, Vaccaro, Honowitz, Navarro, Murphy, and Howard, in ordinance pertaining to the collection of funds to assist in the prevention of domestic violence in support of individuals impacted in the city, authorizing the Comptroller to establish the Domestic Violence Prevention and Family Support Fund. The following board bill was reported out of the Housing Committee, Board Bill 101, as amended, sponsored by Alderman Green, in ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 3172 Morgan Ford. That's the extent of our second reading.
We'll dispense with line item 14. Madam Clerk, at the request of Alderman from the 1st, please move Board Bill 175 to the regular perfection calendar. As Board Bill 175 to the regular perfection calendar.
So noted.
Alderman from the 3rd, you recognize.
Yes, sir. I would like to make a motion, I would like to make a motion to move, I mean to reconsider Board Bill 124 on the perfection calendar, the perfection of Board Bill 124, sorry.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 3rd ward, that we reconsidered a vote taken last week on Board Bill 124, to move it back to the regular perfection calendar. So it's been moved by Alderman from the 3rd, seconded by Alderman from the 20th, I believe. Alderman from the 24th?
I was gonna ask, please explain.
Yes, sir. Basically, we repealed ordinance number 6900, and it should have been 69,000. We left out a zero, and just want to introduce the floor sub later, and add that zero back in.
Okay. All right, any further discussion, any further discussion? It's been moved by Alderman from the 3rd, having voted on the prevailing side, to reconsider the vote to perfect Board Bill 124. And it's been seconded by Alderman from the 20th. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Bosley.
Twenty-first.
Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Conway. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alderman Martin. Alderman Honowitz. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navarro. President Reed. Alderman Ingracia. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Navarro. Twenty-four, aye votes.
By your vote, you stay in the motion of Alderman from the 3rd. Madam Clerk, please make note that the motion was made by Alderman from the 3rd, seconded by Alderman from the 21st, not the 20th.
So noted.
And please place Board Bill 124 at the end of our regular perfection calendar.
So noted.
Perfection consent.
Board Bill, Board Bill 185, sponsored by Alderman Spencer, in ordinance approving redevelopment plan for 3420 California. Board Bill 142, sponsored by Alderman Mohammed, in ordinance approving redevelopment plan for 4400 through 44, 4401 through 43 Red Bud. Board Bill 146, sponsored by Alderman Mohammed, in ordinance approving a blinding study and a redevelopment plan for 4100 through 4798 and 4101 through 4799 West Natural Bridge, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 182, sponsored by Alderman Davis, in ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission. Comptroller and the Board of Investment and Apportement making certain findings with respect to the transfer of up to $630,000 of excess monies that the city intends to transfer from Debt Service Stabilization Fund to the Airport Development Fund in accordance with Section 516B of the Lambert-St. Louis International Airport Indenture of Trust between the city as grantor and UMB Bank as trustee dated October the 15th, 1984, as amended and restated as of July the 1st, 2009, as amended and supplemented, authorizing a transfer in an amount not to exceed $630,000 from DSSF into the Airport Development Fund during the fiscal year beginning July the 1st, 2017, for the purpose of making funds available to address the emergency replacement of 5,000-gallon airfield maintenance diesel fuel storage tanks, containing a severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill 183, sponsored by Alderman Davis, in ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Public Service, and the Board of Investment and Apportement, authorizing a First Amendment to Section 1 of the Airport Building and Environment Project, Ordinance 70410, approved December the 19th, 2016, which authorized a multi-year public work improvement program at St. Louis Lambert International Airport, increasing the total estimated cost of the Airport Building and Environment Project by $630,000 to $17,630,000, and amending Exhibit A entitled Fiscal Year 2017 Project Equipment List by adding a new project to the list entitled Replacement of 5,000-gallon airfield maintenance diesel fuel storage tanks, authorizing a first supplemental appropriation in a total amount of $630,000 from the Airport Development Fund into the Airport Building and Environment Project, Ordinance 60410, approved December the 19th, 2016, for the payment of costs for work and services authorized therein, containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 184, sponsored by Alderman Davis, in ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Investment and Apportement, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller, owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport, to enter into and execute the Host International Local Concept Restaurant Concession Agreement, AL 073, between the city and Host International, granting to the concessionaire substitute, and in accordance with the terms, covenants, conditions of the agreement, certain rights and privileges in connection with the occupancy and use of the premises, which is defined and more fully described in Section 201 of the concession agreement that was approved by the Airport Commission, containing a severability clause and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 170, as amended, sponsored by Alderman Mohammed, in ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Streets temporarily close barricade or otherwise impede the flow of traffic on the 4,000-block of Red Bud by blocking said flow of, on the 4,400-block of Red Bud, by blocking said flow of traffic at the North Curb Line of Carter. That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of the perfection consent calendar.
Been moved by Alderman from the 18th, and seconded by Alderman from the 25th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the 3rd, for what purpose do you rise?
I'd like to make a motion to introduce the floor sub 124.
We're not at your bill yet.
Okay.
We're not at your bill yet, so. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill 132, committee substitute as amended, sponsored by Alderman Howard, and Alderman and Alderwomen, Howard, Kotar, Gunther, Martin, Murphy, Spencer, Cone, Davis, Tyus, Oldenburg, Williamson, and Navarro, in ordinance establishing an Office of Community Mediation, organized under and supervised by the Office of City Counselor, providing for the appointment of a director for its oversight and management, who shall establish a protocol for the delivering voluntary mediation services for the citizens of the city, and shall monitor the outcomes and lasting results of mediations.
Alderman from the 14th, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill number 132, committee substitute as amended.
Yes, sir. I would like to add Alderman Kennedy's name to that board bill.
Madam Clerk, please make note, you need to make motion?
I'd like to make a motion to add all, to perfect. To perfect this Board Bill 132.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 14th, that we perfect Board Bill 132, committee substitute as amended, and seconded by Alderman from the 13th. Please proceed, Alderman.
First off, I'd like to add Alderman Kennedy's name to this bill.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that, add Alderman from the 18th as a co-sponsor to the bill.
So noted.
This bill is establishing an Office of Community Mediation as prescribed in the Ferguson study, and this will provide appointment of a director and oversight and management of volunteer mediators. It will provide training to mediators, to provide services to all the city departments, and the citizens of the city of St. Louis.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 14th, you recognize to close.
I would like to move that this board bill be passed into law.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 14th, seconded by Alderman from the 13th, that we perfect Board Bill 132, committee substitute as amended. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
Board Bill 175, sponsored by Alderman Kotar, in ordinance recommending Sponsored by Alderman Kotar and on its recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing that the city, Missouri taxable tax increment revenue note for 706 Market Redevelopment Project Series 2016A dated April the 19th, 2016, in a principal amount not to exceed $7 million plus issuance costs be refunded and reissued as a tax exemptive note with a reduced interest rate, authorizing and directing the city to enter into a placement agreement with Stern Brothers and Co., Brothers and Company pursuant to which the parties provide for the purchase of the reissued Series 2016A note by the initial purchaser thereof, authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to execute and deliver the reissued Series 2016A note, authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to execute and deliver a tax compliance certificate in connection with the issuance of the reissued Series 2016A note and containing a severability clause.
Alderman from the 7th, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill Number 175.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I move to perfect Board Bill 175.
Moved by Alderman from the 7th, seconded by Alderman from the 26th. Any discussion? Alderman from the 1st.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd ask Alderman from the 7th if he would yield.
Alderman from the 7th will yield to Alderman from the 1st.
Yes.
Alderman from the 1st, please proceed.
Thank you. Alderman, one reason I asked for this to be taken off the consent calendar is because I see that it, the board bill is actually amending, as I understand it, two ordinances, 69645 and 69646. I'm sorry.
I see you.
I had to look for where you were. And so they weren't attached, but I had a couple of questions about, the major thing I see in here is that it is reducing the interest rate of some previous TIF bonds, is that correct?
That's correct. It's, it will refund and reissue the TIF notes to not only reduce the interest rate from about six and a half percent down to closer to three or four, and those will be privately placed, and not only will the interest rate be reduced, the notes will be paid off approximately four years earlier, which means the tax dollars currently being pledged to the TIF will flow back into the city four years earlier, and this is for the LaCleed Gas Headquarters at 706 Market.
I, I'm familiar, I used to be on HUDs when this went through. And so you answered several of my questions I was going to ask, so that's good. But did we include some more costs that we're going to let the developer write off in Section 3, Page 3 of 7? So I see there's amendment, so did we, when I see this language, it makes me very nervous. It says, insurance cost means all costs reasonably incurred by the city of developer, city or the developer in furtherance of the issuance or reinsurance of TIF notes, including without limitation. That word always makes me very nervous when I see without limitation. So are we added, adding any more cost than what we already had in there?
The only additional cost would be, I mean, so you're basically buying the notes back from the developer and reissuing them. The only cost would be, I guess, any sort of transactional fee, reissuance cost with Stern Brothers, who's reissuing the notes, but I mean, and I don't know what their transaction fee is on something like this, but it is far less than what we'll get back by paying off the notes early.
Again, so as a lawyer, that word, without limitation, if I'm doing it now all of a sudden, and I'm telling you that that to me, I don't know why we're using that kind of language in our, in our development bills, because that to me sets off a fire alarm that people can add all kind of things in there. But okay. So my other question, but before, we already had in there the issuers counsel, disclosure counsel, bond counsel, and developers counsel, did we already have those in the previous ones, do you know?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. And you answered one of my other questions, so maturity date changes, but it changes, so it'll be earlier, is that correct?
It'll be four years earlier, that's correct.
Thank you. That's all the questions, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not a TIF person, I usually vote no, but in this case, I'll just vote present, because it is a good thing that we're doing something to reduce the cost, but I'm still not a TIF person, being a longtime supporter of the St. Louis Public Schools, so I will be voting present, but that's better than the no vote I usually have.
Thank you, Alderman. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 7th, you recognize to close on the perfection of Board Bill 175.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would add, I would be remiss if I didn't say that this board bill is being offered at the request and advice of the comptroller, who wants to see these notes reissued and refinanced, to get this building back fully on the tax rolls earlier. So I would ask for your favorable consideration. Just so you know, I will also be requesting to suspend the rules and third read and final passes today, simply so we can get this deal done before the end of the year at the comptroller's request. So with that, I renew my motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we perfect Board Bill Number 175. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar.
Aye.
Alderman Conway. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Martin. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navarro. President Reed. Alderman Ingracia. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Navarro. Twenty-four, I votes one present.
By your vote, you stay in the motion of Alderman from the 7th and perfected Board Bill Number 175.
Board Bill 124, sponsored by Alderman Bosley and on its repealing on its 6900 pertaining to the issuance of any package or drink liquor license for any premises within the boundaries of the Third Ward Liquor Control District and in lieu thereof containing the following supplementary exemptions, renewal of an existing license and establishment of an entertainment district and containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the 3rd, you recognized on the perfection of Board Bill 124.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to introduce the floor sub for 124.
Okay, first, first make the motion to perfect, and then we do the floor substitute after that.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to perfect Board Bill 124.
Moved by Alderman from the 3rd, entertain the second. Seconded by Alderman from the 27th. Any discussion?
I would like to make a motion to introduce a floor sub for Board Bill 124.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 3rd that we introduce a floor substitute for Board Bill 124, entertain the second on that motion, seconded by Alderman from the 13th. Does everyone have the floor substitute on their desk? Yes. Would you like to talk about the floor substitute at all?
Once again, basically, we are just adding a zero, we repealed, we, well, we appealed, that's not the right word I'm looking for, 6,900, and we're just adding a zero, it should have been 69,000.
Okay, it's been.
Just adding a zero.
Okay, it's been moved by Alderman from 3rd, seconded by Alderman from 13th, that we introduce floor substitute for Board Bill 124. Alderman favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Alderman from the 3rd, you recognize?
I'd like to make a motion to send this to the perfection calendar.
Uh, no, now you just need to make a motion to perfect the floor substitute.
I'm sorry, I'd like to make a motion to perfect the floor substitute.
Moved by Alderman from 3rd, seconded by Alderman from the 18th. Any discussion? Alderman favors signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries.
That's the extent of third, uh, board bills for perfection.
Alderman from the 7th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I move to suspend the rules for the purpose of moving Board Bill 175 from the perfection calendar to the, I'm sorry, move Board Bill 175 to the third reading consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the 7th, entertain the second on that motion, seconded by Alderman from the 13th. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. President, you wanted to, oh, okay. Mr. President, I withdraw my motion. Can I withdraw my motion?
Uh, yes, Alderman from 13th, you withdraw your second. Alderman from the 7th, you withdraw your motion.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move to move Board Bill 175 to the third reading calendar, not the third reading consent calendar, my apologies.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 7th, seconded by Alderman from 13th, that we move Board Bill 175 to the third reading, regular third reading calendar. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Conway. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Martin. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navarro. President Reed. Alderman Ingracia. Alderman Conway. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Navarro. Twenty-two, I vote.
By your vote, you stay in the motion of Alderman from the 7th and move Board Bill Number 175 to the regular third reading calendar.
That's the extent of board bills for perfection?
Yeah, board bills for perfection. Alderman from the 18th, you recognize, you have a bill you want out of the consent calendar?
Yes, Mr. President, would you please, on behalf of the sponsor, would you please move Board Bill 174 to the third reading informal calendar?
Madam Clerk, please make note of that, Board Bill.
174.
174, to the third reading informal calendar.
What, what board bill was it?
174.
174.
It's on page 14.
Okay, so noted.
Alderman from the 19th.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to ask for the privilege to suspend the rules, to move Board Bills from the perfection consent calendar, third reading.
Okay, which, which board bill?
I have Board Bills Number 182, 183, and 184.
182, 183, and 184. It's been moved by Alderman from 19th, seconded by Alderman from the 14th, that we suspend our rules for the purposes of moving Board Bills 180.
Two, 183, and 184.
To the third reading consent calendar. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. I didn't hear you. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Conway. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Martin. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navar, Alderman Navarro. President Reed. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Ingracia. Alderman Conway. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Navarro. Twenty-three, I votes.
By your vote, you stay in the motion of Alderman from the, Alderman from the 19th, and place the aforementioned bills on third reading consent calendar.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please place the aforementioned bills at the end of the third reading consent calendar.
So noted.
Third reading consent.
Board Bills 167, 179, 124.
Uh, no, not, not 124.
I'm sorry. 125, 96, 70, 174.
Not 174. Not 174.
Oh, I'm sorry.
174 is on informal count.
It's on informal, I'm sorry. 182, 183, and 184.
Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of the third reading consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the 18th, seconded by Alderman from the 26th. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Conway. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Martin. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navarro. President Reed. Alderman Ingracia. Alderman Conway. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Navarro. Twenty-three, I vote.
By your, by your vote, you stay in the motion of Alderman from the 18th and third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading report of engrossments.
Board Bill 175.
Alderman from the 7th, you recognize on the third read and final passage of Board Bill 175.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I move to third read and final pass Board Bill 175.
Moved by Alderman from the 7th, seconded by Alderman from the 13th. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. I can't hear you. Alderman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Conway. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Martin. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderman Howard? Alderman Green?
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg?
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey?
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy?
Aye.
Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Alderman Spencer? Alderman Mohammed? Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Vaccaro?
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy?
Aye.
Alderman Cohn?
Aye.
Alderman Williamson?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Navarro? President Reed?
Aye.
Alderman Ingracia? Alderman Conway? Alderman Spencer? Alderman Mohammed? Alderman Navarro? Twenty-two, I vote.
By your vote, you abstain the motion, Alderman from the 7th, and third read, and finally pass, board bill number 175.
That's the extent of third reading, report of engrossment, and final passage.
Report of enrollment. All other business being suspended, the president shall have an open session to fix this signature here too, to the end, that these may become law.
Resolution 166, sponsored by Alderman Davis Enterprise Zone for 1641 Tower Grove LLC.
Alderman from the 19th, you recognize on the first reading, resolution 166.
Board bill number 166.
Resolution, resolution 166.
I'm sorry, resolution number 166. This resolution is just empowering, the enterprise zone is already in place in the Tower Grove There's about to be a building renovated that will have a number of new businesses there. This is the first one, which will be a sit-down restaurant that we're all looking forward to, and the development process there is very healthy. On that street, as many of us know, five years ago, we had nothing, and now we're moving forward. So I ask for approval of this resolution, for that.
You want to pass out via unanimous consent?
I would ask for unanimous consent if possible.
Hearing no objection, would you like to now make a motion to adopt it?
I now like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 166.
Been moved by Alderman from the 19th, entertain a second on that motion. Second by Alderman from the 18th.
We don't have to do that.
Okay. Yeah, we've been notified, I was just notified that these refer to an enhanced enterprise zone, so the enhanced enterprise zone has to go to committee. So would you like to withdraw your motion?
I'll withdraw my motion, I asked for the second to be withdrawn, and have this resolution sent to the HUDs committee.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman from the 19th, and second by Alderman from the 18th, and Alderman from the 19th, and Alderman from the 18th withdraw their first and second, that resolution 166 be sent to the HUDs committee. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on resolution of 167.
Thank you. Did you want the clerk to read the resolution?
Yes.
Resolution 167, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, Enterprise Zone for 5642 Natural Bridge LLC.
Alderman from the 22nd.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to move to send resolution 167 to the HUDs committee.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 22nd, that we sign resolution 167 to HUDs, entertain a second on that motion. Second by Alderman from the 23rd, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please sign resolution 167 to HUDs.
So noted. Resolution 169, sponsored by Alderman Vaccaro and Alderman Mohammed, the Board of Alderman Register, our support for the prompt initiation of a comprehensive, independent financial audit of the city of St. Louis.
Alderman from the 23rd, you recognize on the first reading of resolution 169.
I would like to make a motion, we amend resolution 169.
First, you got to bring the resolution in front of us, so if you'd like to make a motion and a second.
Then I would like to make a motion, we bring board bill 169 in front of us.
Do you, is there additional language on it, or are you going to send this to committee?
No, I'm going to try and get unanimous consent.
Are you, okay.
That would be my hopes.
And so you'd like to make a motion to, to adopt resolution 169, so you'd make a motion, Alderman from the 23rd?
Yes, I make a motion that we adopt resolution 169.
169, entertain a second on that motion. Second by Alderman from the 22nd. And any discussion? Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'm reading the state auditor's letter that's put on our desk, and it talks about a financial cost, and I'd like to know where the fiscal note to this resolution is, because it's going to be a cost, it could be substantial, so I want to know where the fiscal note, before it gets introduced, otherwise I'd ask that this not be allowed to be introduced until they get some kind of estimate of fiscal cost, that's what we said we were going to be doing with these things now.
All right, all right. Thank you, Alderman, any further discussion?
I have some other, first I want that ruled on, because I also have some further questions about where in our charter does it allow us to do that, and most definitely opposed to being a unanimous consent, because we don't have anything before us saying that our charter actually allows us to do that, and we also have the issue of the fiscal note, and there are some other problems with this.
All right. I believe Alderman from the 23rd would probably be open to sending this to committee to work out the details of the costs and the fiscal note, and all those things.
Sure, that would be fine, but I do want to comment, you know, because we did write to the legal counsel of the state auditor, and I did put a copy of this letter from the state auditor's office that explains why and how the Board of Aldermen, by resolution and/or by ordinance, can ask for an audit.
Alderman from the first, you, please proceed.
It does not say by, it says in certain limited cases. What I am asking is, does our charter specifically allow, because when you talk about...
Would you like to inquire of the Alderman from the 23rd?
Or...
Alderman from the 23rd, will you yield for questions to the Alderman from the first?
Yes, I would.
Alderman from the first, please proceed.
Alderman, so you, thank you for putting this on our desk, because it kind of shoots yourself in your foot, because it says, in limited cases, city charter permits the city legislative body to request special audits of the city. Do you have any such ruling that our city charter, and if you so, what portion of our city charter allows this to happen?
So this audit, one of the things when we were checking on this, because that was the question...
I can't hear you.
This was the question that was asked, because there's a ballot petition out there of people getting things signed. We checked with the state auditor's office, because in 2008 through 10, they did one of these audits already, and this is just following the same rules that let us do it back then will let us do it now, and, you know, and again, from their legal counsel, you know, it says we can do it, and that's why I put this out there. The only thing that I agree with is the cost, and we don't know that until we initiate this, and we start to get a cost.
So, again, and which I already know, with Alderman from 15th just confirmed, because I have already signed a petition asking for...
Sure, and if you don't feel that we should pass something as the Board of Aldermen, don't pass it. I'm saying that that ballot initiative doesn't, isn't necessary that this board can actually move and do what they want to do now.
So, again, let me try again. My few little years I've been in law school and took a bar, so let me try again, okay, and pass the bar and practice law. It does not say the St. Louis city charter can do this, it says, in limited cases, city charter permits the city legislative body to request special audits of the city. It does not say the St. Louis city charter allows this. My question to you is this, what part of our charter says we can do that? Please give me, what section?
I will look that up, I'll have attorney look that up.
Because before...
And just for your, resolutions do not require a fiscal note, let's get that out front, but I can't ask our attorney to look that up for us.
Resolutions, when you put before my desk saying that you want to do something that people are already working on...
Resolutions don't require a fiscal note.
Excuse me, I'll let you finish, please let me finish, okay? I'll let you finish, and then you talk right over me, so if that's, we're not going to have a good conversation that way, all right? Thank you. So, resolutions should require fiscal note, when you put in before my desk that this, that the auditor says that, please be aware that the expense incurred in performing the audit shall be paid for by the requesting political subdivision, the final cost will depend upon many factors, including but not limited to, on and on and on. Before, when we've had these audits, because the auditor does their job, they come down and do it, and you can do it by petition, but here you are now telling us that we should petition for it, I mean, that we should pass a resolution asking for it to be done, when you don't have anything on my desk from any lawyer saying that our charter allows it, because when you talk about the revised Missouri statutes, that refers to many cities, so then you have to go and look at your particular charter to see if that allows that, okay? So it says in limited circumstances, so I want to know what those limited circumstances are, you don't have any such information on the desk, and so that is my question to you, where is the research that says the city of St. Louis can do it, not Boomville, because when you start to look at the, I'll give you an example, so you can understand. When you look at the Missouri statutes, they have about five different things that different sheriffs can do. Our sheriff can do something different than another sheriff can do. Our treasurer is different, everything is different, so they don't write state statutes for the city of St. Louis, that's what our charter is for. So when I'm asking you this, I'm absolutely asking you, where is it that you can provide me that we can do this in the first place? Do you have something from our attorney, the city councilors, anybody saying, this section in the city charter allows this to happen?
Okay, so I rely on the general counsel from Nicole Galloway's office, who said we do, and at no point, well, you know, I rely on attorneys, you are an attorney, I rely on attorneys, their general counsel said we can do this, if you feel you want to just keep people out there working through the winter, gathering signatures, or if you want to resolve this and get this moving on, and show how the city is fiscally responsible or not, I, you know, a lot of people were interested and wanted to know, I believe that an audit is in order, and I believe we can do it this way.
Okay, so tell me exactly where the, in this letter, where her general counsel, Mr. Paul Hopper, says the city of St. Louis can do it, because I see no place where he says under, that it says that, he says, under le, limited cases, city charters permit, does not say the St. Louis city legislative body, so show me where it says in here, because I must have a different letter than you.
No, I'm going by the conversation with them, and the letter, and that it's been done before, this isn't, we're not recreating anything, we've done this before.
When have we done this before, since you say in that, Alderman, when? I've been down here twenty, almost twenty years, when did we do this before?
If you read the resolution, in 2008 through 2010, there was an audit of the city of all the different offices, including the Board of Aldermen, Lewis would probably remember it, because one of the things at that time, the auditor suggested that he should eliminate having a car for the president of the board, which our president agreed and got rid of the car, it wasn't much of a car, but, so it's been done before.
Yes, audits have been done many times before, I want to know, but the difference is how it gets started, okay? Who, what was the process? Who initiated that audit?
It's, well...
Do you know that?
Well, you got to wait for Meghan to come over and give you some questions.
No, Meghan don't have, first of all, you are so insulting, maybe you should give somebody to give you some answers, I was here way before Meghan Green. Meghan Green aspires to be Sharon Tyus, let me let you know that, okay?
She's certainly welcome to ask questions.
Thank you, I don't need anybody, I will confer, because when I don't understand something, I will take the time to hear people, so hear it again, do you know how the initial audit back in 2008?
Eight and ten, right, eight through ten, it was a three-year audit.
How were they initiated?
Again, I don't know, I do know that after talking to them...
Well, then don't refer me to them, that's what, you don't know enough to be trying to pass this, what you have is a half-baked piece of legislation that really should not even be before us, because you're talking about costing us money, but at the utmost should be...
I suggest you go ahead...
And again, you're talking over me, thank you, I have no more questions for the Alderman from the 23rd, because his answer is, I don't know, and I think, and those are not good answers, okay? Thank you, I have no further questions, I'll take the floor from here, because he doesn't know how to let us have a conversation.
Please proceed, Alderman.
Thank you. I rise in opposition, not to the concept, I always think good government should be audited, so I have no problems with that, I do have a problem with the way this legislation has been piecemealed, and that the sponsor does not know the answers, if most certainly it is true, and I, and I will say that maybe my memory does not serve me well, that we don't have to have a fiscal impact for resolutions, I would say we need to revisit that, because when a elected official tells me, well, it's going to cost you money, and I don't know how much, that's the whole point why we wanted to have fiscal impacts on board bills. I would ask, if we're going to introduce this, that we send this to committee, and that we get some information about how this should be done, the whole point of having a citizens' initiative process is so the citizens can do these kind of things, and I support that, and I do not support trying to undercut what citizens have been doing when they've been working so hard at doing this, and Alderman from the 23rd said, well, if you want them to be working in the winter, I don't want them to do anything, I didn't start this, but I support citizens getting out and doing these kind of things, and I don't want to do anything in the Board of Aldermen to undercut their process.
And I believe when Alderman from the 23rd, when he originally talked about this, you were open to sending this to committee, would you like to send this to committee?
Send it to the legislative committee.
All right, so would you like, Alderman from the 22nd, would you like to withdraw your motion to adopt, and then, and Alderman from the 23rd, withdraw your first motion?
I do.
All right, and make a motion?
I would make a motion, we send this to committee, I prefer legislation.
All right, it's been moved by, entertain a second on that, entertain a second, second by Alderman from the 24th, and then Alderman from the 24th, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. President, I just have a couple comments and maybe recommendations, since this will go to committee, I think it would be very valuable, one, for us to be able to review the last audit from 2010 in committee, and maybe touch upon the major findings, and what has happened as a result of those major findings in that 2010 audit. I think it would also be helpful to have a representative from the Comptroller's Office and the Budget Division there, to talk about the types of things that are not an audit, but the ongoing financial controls that do exist, because it's not like nobody ever looks at the spending that is occurring in these different departments, so I think it would be valuable to have a representative from each of those offices... Entertain a second on that. Entertain a second. Second about Alderman from the 24th. And then Alderman from the 24th, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a couple comments and maybe recommendations. Since this will go to committee, I think it would be very valuable, one, for us to be able to review the last audit from 2010 in committee and maybe touch upon the major findings and what has happened as a result of those major findings in that 2010 audit. I think it would also be helpful to have a representative from the Comptroller's Office and the Budget Division there to talk about the types of things that are not an audit but the ongoing financial controls that do exist. Because it's not like nobody ever looks at the spending that is occurring in these different departments. So I think it'd be valuable to have a representative from each of those offices talk to us about what they do on a routine basis and what is different about an audit and what additional things we might learn from an audit. And third, I think it'd be very helpful within the resolution to actually name all the departments that are going to get audited. When we just say "city," that is vague. And you get to the edges of what the city is, and you get these, you know, quasi-city entities, and then you're not sure, are those in? Are they out? So we should just name all the offices or departments that we think should be audited in the resolution. And then we can send it or not send it to Otter Galloway and see what happens. But those are my recommendations. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Alderman from the 19th?
First, let me thank the Alderman from the 24th. That is the beginning of some of the things that need to happen here. I am not opposed to audits. But what I am opposed to is half-doing things. And so one of the things that we need to do is, first of all, we have to work in concert so that we can have a good outcome. If we have different entities fighting us, most especially those who have the authority to give us the money, to help us give us the money, then we're in bad shape to start off with. This is going to be an expensive endeavor. And I know it's going to be over a million. Probably over a million and a half. But one of the things we need to include in this... Yeah, you can see how the money has been spent. But you need to also know how this city is operating. So an operational audit needs to be included in this. That's where one of our big problems... We're doing things the same way we did it in 1950. We're doing things that we don't need to do anymore, and we need to probably send it out to a private entity. We also are not automated properly. So an operational audit would help this city in order to be able to work better with the budget in ways and means. So when we're going to look at something, let's look at it in its totality and go and use the processes that are before us. Part of what was left out in this memo, which, you know, people say things... But we are our own county, too. And so when we look at this, we got to remember how our ordinances are written for different departments and whether or not they get included. And if you don't name every one of them, then just "city" could leave out 50% of where our money is spent and/or collected. So we need to really examine this. And I don't know if it's going to happen in committee. But that means I got to go to another committee meeting because I have to be there. There's a laundry list that must be created in order to make this work properly. And I just wanted to share that because I've been saying this, and you know I've been saying it ever since I've been here. I want to do an operational audit so bad because I want to clean it up and sweep it out. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 1st, any discussion on sending it to committee?
No, I have a point. I was just going to say, are we sending it to committee? So I don't want to say anything else because I'll come to committee because I'm full of questions.
All right. Any further discussion? Any further questions? It's been moved by Alderman from the 23rd, second about Alderman from the 24th, that we send Resolution 169 to legislation. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please assign Resolution 169 to legislation.
So noted. That's the extent of our first reading of resolutions.
We dispense with line item 22. Misland is unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
There are no meetings next week. Thursday, the office is closed. Thanksgiving Day, Friday, the office is closed also. Thanksgiving holiday. That's the extent of my announcements.
Alderman from the 25th?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I would like to congratulate Damian Johnson, a citizen, I believe, of the 20th Ward. But I consider him a roving citizen. He's very much a community activist. And he comes to meetings across the city and particularly in Southern City. So many of us down here are familiar with him. But he just recently graduated from the police citizen academy. And I want to thank him for his interest in that and congratulate him on his recent accomplishment. Second, I do, Madam Clerk, want to put a note on the calendar that we are having a neighborhood development committee meeting on Tuesday, November 28 at 9:00 a.m. Again, that's Tuesday, November 28 at 9:00 a.m. For any of you committee members that are present today. We'll be hearing a number of board bills. And then lastly, I guess a point of personal privilege for the 25th Ward. Some exciting news was announced yesterday that Habitat for Humanity is going to be relocating to this stretch of South Grand at Grand and Chippewa. And Michael Powers, who is a former employee of the Board of Aldermen, now works over at Habitat as their development manager. And so I've been working with him very closely the last few months on their potential, well, now actually, future relocation to the 25th Ward in the Dutch Town neighborhood. And for those of you that are unfamiliar, this is a stretch of South... Excuse me. South Grand that has long been vacant. The 38,000 through 4,000 blocks have seen, you know, over 60% vacancy rates in the last 10, 15 years. And so this is a really exciting addition to the neighborhood. And it'll certainly help to move things along as we're making progress on South Grand. As many of you know, the Business Association and myself worked really hard to get the Dutch Town Community Improvement District established this year. So this is a wonderful new addition to Dutch Town. And they're hoping to move next April. But we're happy to have them down on South Grand, not only their headquarters, but also their storage facility. And the Restore Shop, which is a retail business that's operated by Habitat, is also going to be relocating on South Grand as well. So just want to take a moment to welcome them to the neighborhood. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Alderman from the 1st?
Members of the board, for those who did not see, on Wednesday, Federal Judge Perry issued widespread restrictions on the policing of our community. You know Alderman Green and myself, who waited 12 years for her to come here so I would be able to say something according to the Alderman from the 23rd. So I don't know what I did those first 12 years. But anyway, both of us have been working on resolutions and board bills about how the police were policing the protesters, lawful, peaceful protesters. And the judge sided with the ACLU and the protesters and restricted our police. We need to now codify and make ordinance so that they understand that legal protest is a right under the United States Constitution. And our police do not supersede the rights of the citizens of the United States. And this has been a great victory for peaceful protests. And I want to thank Alderman Green for her hard work on this.
All right. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 19th?
Yes. Very quickly, I wanted to congratulate the entire graduation class from the police academy last night. One of the things that people complain about is we don't have enough policemen. But every one of us should be trying to recruit at least one person. And that will solve our problem. We have what I consider to be a good police force as a whole. We have some problems. And we need to deal with the problem, people individually and not throughout the whole police department. So I really am looking forward to them coming. I know that Captain Deese was very excited about his son graduating. And prayerfully, they will all be very, very, very good in their positions in the future. I also wanted to thank our neighborhood associations around the city. They have become more active than ever before. And that's a good thing because it keeps us on our toes. It allows a lot of good interaction and networking to happen. And the more active the citizens are, the more likely that we can reduce crime and everything else. So I ask those who don't go to their neighborhood meetings to start going and become a part of problem solving in their neighborhoods. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Alderman from the 4th?
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I like that, Lisa. You can leave it up. My church organization, Kojic Church of God in Christ, was here from the 7th of November to the 14th. And the impact that we left on St. Louis was over $40 million. And over 40,000 people showed up for the convention. We had the likes of Joel Osteen and Marvin Sapp. And others came to that convention, which is the largest convention that St. Louis has. We worked with the mayor on keeping the convention here every year. It was our 110th, and we've been here in St. Louis for seven years. So we looked to stay here for a while. We, I think we negotiated two more years. We also prayed for the city of St. Louis on the steps and presented a letter to the mayor, which the judge followed through on about the police brutality in the city of St. Louis. So that was a very, very encouraging part. Kojic also cleaned up Martin Luther King. We had a Kojic clean. We do Kojic read. And we came in church, came into the city of St. Louis not just as the big hat-wearing, shouting, jumping-up-and-down people. But we impact this St. Louis city by not leaving just money. But we did a lot of other social projects that was good for the city. Also, I have two new developments that have started in the city in my ward. A new 42-unit development and a new senior living daycare facility. My medicine is kicking in. God bless.
All right. Thank you. Alderman from the 21st?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to honor our colleague, Alderman Bosley, who this Wednesday, he was able to get 16 people from North St. Louis jobs with his Job Connection program.
Excellent.
And they were all excited.
Oh, wow. Good work, Alderman. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, may I make an announcement?
Yes. That's always in order for you.
Thank you, Mr. President. In my capacity as the chairman of the Public Safety Committee, I was asked by the mayor to sit on the Special Advisory Committee that would recommend a new chief to the Public Safety Director. That committee has a meeting tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. at the International Center. The first portion of the meeting will be for public testimony. Afterwards, it will go into closed session and to consider the 10 candidates that have been sent over to the committee from the hired company that helped with the search. These 10 will be homed down to six. Usually, the personnel office looks for six candidates to send over to their appointing authority. So hopefully, we don't... We have not seen information on these candidates yet because of privacy issues. But the advisory committee will see them tomorrow and have the opportunity to go through them. So I have no idea how long that's going to take. But the idea is to get it done. Judge Edwards, in the last public hearing of this committee, asked the committee to give him some names so he can have this appointment by mid-December. And so the committee is endeavoring to do so. So that meeting is tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. at the International Center. The meeting of the advisory committee to select a mayor.
All right.
The first part of the meeting is public. And it's open for public testimony. I do want to remind us something. There's an elder in our community who I believe very wisely said, "We're not the beginning. We're not the end. We're the continuance." The struggle for social justice in this country did not begin with us. It probably won't end with us. But each generation tries to add to it and make it a little bit better. The call for police reform in this city began as far back as the 1920s when the NAACP called for some police reform after the East St. Louis Race Riot. And those police officers were used to help the rioters burn down the black community. They called for police reform in terms of how they handled the crowd. They called police reform in terms of civilian oversight. Then shortly thereafter, the Urban League joined into that voice and also did pickets down at the police station to get police reform. They were able to get some things. In 1930, the Urban League also called for this reform in the civilian oversight as well as how they handled the demonstrators that were happening at that time. Because an incident that happened when a police officer had handcuffed a... Actually, an elderly black man and said that he tried to escape from a locked car and shot him in the back. But he was handcuffed. So we're not the beginning. We're not the end. We're the continuance. To remind us that this has been a protracted and an ongoing struggle. And so we each, in our time, try to make a contribution to it. And so we're seeing a number of reforms happening now. But I just want to remind us that this didn't start with us. And it probably won't end with us. But we each are trying to make a contribution to make it better. And so I just sometimes want to remind us of the history so that we will not forget the footsteps that got us this far so that we can achieve the things that we're achieving today. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I also want to wish a very, very, very happy birthday to Ms. Cordia Mopins. She lives in Heritage House. She celebrated her 100th birthday this week. So let's give her a big round of applause. She always watches us at the Board of Aldermen every Friday. So we just want to congratulate you. And Ms. Mopins, have a great, great birthday and a very, very happy Thanksgiving. Alderman from the 4th?
Thank you, Mr. President. The 4th Ward Ward Meeting is tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. at the Salvation Army on Couples and Euclid. 10:00 a.m. tomorrow. And our 10th Annual Turkey Giveaway is Monday, the 20th of this month, whereby we'll be giving away over 600 turkeys to the constituents of the 4th Ward.
All right.
So don't bother to come by and get a turkey.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the Alderman from the 6th, 20th, and 28th be excused for necessary absence.
Move by Alderman from the 18th, second about Alderman from the 10th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the board adjourns until Friday, December 1st, 10:00 a.m.
Move by Alderman from the 18th, second about Alderman from the 25th. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Stand adjourned.